Appreciate everyone coming to this April meeting, Central County Council. Notice the presence of a call. First on the agenda, the approval of the minutes or two meetings going to joint meeting on March seventeenth. If I have a chance to look at those. We're gonna take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
They made a motion seconded by Scott. Are there any questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. We also have the meeting minutes from the March twentieth meeting. Seconded by Kim. Are there any questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. Along with the joint session, I'm not sure there's enough lines on here. You might have to add a line.
Oh, really?
It'll be close. Next on the agenda is EMA board opening. This is the seat that Mike Mayer was in and I apologize, I should have had this on the last meeting agenda and overlooked it. Patty is, she agreed to attend the meeting that happened in the meantime, the March meeting, I guess it was, is that right?
Yeah, March fifteenth.
She's went to the last meeting and said she would be going to sit on that seat, but I'll open it up for nominations.
I'll nominate Patty.
I'll second that.
Nomination to Patty and Kim and seconded by Matt. Any other nominations? Right, we'll go straight into voting for Patty to sit on the EMA board. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, next up is the funding for the EMA radios, the reimbursable grant. Sit around the invoice. And then you guys also got an email with the application and the other details behind it. Colleagues, they're answering questions. I guess my understanding is this is a reimbursable grant.
Yes.
Some things required from the county and then.
Yeah, it'll be reimbursed.
There was a portion that wasn't though, correct? There's a portion of the amount that wasn't being reimbursed by the grant or is that a hundred percent?
It's a hundred percent. Patty, welcome to the EMA. So, this was a, this has been a two-year project with me on this project. And the State Homeland Security Program is title of the grant. It was for our new eight hundred and VHF multiband radios. We're trying to be compatible with the new Phase Two that's going to be coming out eventually in the state. And all radios have to be upgraded and these are already done and ready to go. So, we were very fortunate because this past year, this grant, there was forty-nine counties that put in for this radio grant. And only three got awarded and we were one of the three. So that's how competitive this really is and, and like I say, down the line right now with FEMA's standpoints right now on grants, they're going to start dwindling the way it looks. So, we were very, very fortunate to get this grant. So, are there any questions toward this?
What's your timeline to get all these now that, now that, I think we're going to approve this, but what is your timeline so that?
The timeline is basically we're ready to go. We're done. The radios are programmed. I wanted to wait for approval before I can initiate distribute those. And we're going to have two radio classes for all firefighters are going to be involved in this on the operations of them. So I'm basically ready to go.
There's thirty-three radios?
Thirty-three radios.
So who's, who are these going to?
Fire department. Yeah, the EMS was already taken care of by Emily Miller earlier, this or later this past year. So, but there are some firemen that are on EMS too, so it'll be a two-function radio for them, but these are mostly for other fire departments and the Chiefs Association, they already approved to get four on their own. So we're hoping maybe down that avenue we could get more, but right now this should cover us with the radios we have now, which will be good for another two or three years when they start to influence this Phase Two program. They could come early, but we're pretty much covered now with these thirty-three radios. So, and they're, they're multiband, they have Wi-Fi, they have Bluetooth, they're all up to date and I'd say for the next ten, twelve years. So.
This is a great benefit. Extremely expensive and the eight hundred is the high band, it's new stuff, but it's really expensive, but it's almost like talking on your cell phone.
And for a full seven months alone.
You think of the high band as like talking on a cell phone, the low band stuff. Ability to have both, be able to talk in one divide.
The interoperability with other counties in case we do have a mass disaster here and I have mutual aid coming from other counties, that all plays into that scenario. And it's, it's been at least, we almost did eight months of research on this. I have a radio committee that we researched all kinds of radios out there. Motorola, Tate, Harris, and then Kenwood. And Kenwood seemed to be the best route to go, especially on price and their quality and they've been known for years. So, we researched this pretty heavily. We even did radio checks all over the county with these radios to make sure reception. We do have a few dead spots in the county, but so does about every other county. And so right now eight hundred, we could probably go ninety, ninety-five percent coverage. And VHF with these right now, it's probably still about seventy-five to eighty percent. But we're hoping to upgrade the VHF system also. That's my next project this year. So that's our low band.
The ability to do both is huge. You're working with other departments, even people on your department. The really cost of the eight hundreds is so high, not everyone has. You can really be in a bind where someone else on your department, other department, you can't talk to them.
And they're all programmed also, especially the chiefs, where we have people from the state from Homeland Security coming down. We have all their frequencies and everything. We can go two-way with them on any incident. And the EMA radios, me and Eric Tumler's, we can even communicate with the state police. So, this is a real benefit. I wish we could have got more, but that was the limit of the grant, which was a hundred and forty-nine thousand, six eighty-six, sixty-seven. So.
As far as on the money side, the reimbursement, is that, when would we expect that? Just later?
Well, after the payment on this and distributing everything, I'll get a copy of the paid receipt, a copy of the check, and I send that into my fiscal, second quarter fiscal report. And after that, it goes to the state and we'll just see. I wouldn't say no later than maybe July at the latest, but I'm hoping a little sooner than that. You know, the state there, I mean, this should have been done really almost, almost three months ago because the state was holding on because when Trump got in office and everything, some of the grants were held up up at the state and they kept hanging on to it. And I thought we were, there was something wrong, but no, they were just hanging on to see where they were going to be. So they're a little behind on this. The other two counties in the state that got the grant was Harrison County and Gibson County. Any other questions?
Are there taking a motion?
I'll second that.
Scott, seconded Patty. These funds would come from a portion of casino revenues of two seconds kind.
That's your only choice.
Obviously that's probably what it was, casino revenues, you input that back and then you see the that's what it is for, right?
Yes. The heck of a deal. Okay, so I got motion from Scott, second from Patty for one hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, one hundred and forty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
Eighty-six dollars, I think.
Eighty-nine, it says eighty-nine.
Oh, well, they must have typed on one mind.
Is this me correct?
I guys gave you all the grant award letter and my grant award letter it said one forty-nine, six eighty-six, sixty-seven.
The difference of like the dollars have changed.
Yeah, I don't think.
Yours is a few dollars less.
Yeah. Okay, sorry about that.
One hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and twenty-five cents. Trans proportion of casino revenue. The motion, is there any questions?
Which is will be reimbursed.
Be reimbursed and not cost the county.
There was just one other thing I wanted to add. If you could vote already, I'm sorry. This one, we do have good technical support on this, VEI Communications. They're well-known and well, strongly recommended in the state. So we have good backup on this for any technical support.
Is there like a monthly charge for that? Like in addition to this one hundred and forty-nine thousand?
On the.
Like any support or something?
Well, that'll be billed because if anything happens with it, these radios are going to be handed out to the fire departments. And I do have an MOU for all this, which will be transferred. But they'll, after that will be responsible for these radios.
But there's no like monthly or yearly fees for the bands or?
No.
The fire departments will cover if there isn't.
Yeah. Yeah, if they need to get a new battery or get, maybe they want to get a six-bank charger that'll all go through VEI and through the fire department. This was my avenue to try to get them started. Let's go. This is the best way to do it.
I also have a question. What is, what is going to be the, you know, since they are going to be going out to fire departments and it's going to be, and this maybe Scott can answer this. And it's going to be going to our volunteer fire people, which I understand they are great people, do a heck of a good job. If somebody leaves, what's going to be the process to getting that back, making sure that that stays in that fire department?
Again, that's responsibility of the chief and they'll get that radio back. Some of these radios will be banked and what I mean by bank, some of them will be kept at the station.
There's also these new eight hundreds of
Right.
They're, the eight hundred radios kind of wild. They know who has that radio, like every time you key that up, somebody.
Each radio has an ID.
Know who keyed the radio up. I believe they can locate.
Even if the radio was stolen, once we know it's stolen, they can shut that radio off.
You're kind of scary.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. Minutes.
Anything else?
Thank you, Tom. Appreciate all the effort you've put into this. Okay, next on the agenda is the twenty twenty-five amended salary ordinance. So, Jeff, I'm saying Karen, updated a lot of the tests, went on the format, I guess. There's still a lot to be uncovered. Kind of go into what changes you made and were they standing out?
Is everything updated and corrected in like Gateway and everywhere?
Is there what?
Is everything corrected and right in Gateway now or is it until we do this?
I can't change anything in Gateway until this is signed.
You're saying you can't change it in Gateway. But DLGF is saying that when we advertise it, that we're supposed to load it into Gateway to get their approval.
That I've been loading it, I loaded it in there. Any changes I can't do until it's signed up.
Because I have. You got your approval from DLGF to go ahead and do it.
The initial salary.
Yeah, so just a brief summary. This is a new salary ordinance. That would be retroactive to January twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five to reflect the change. Medium in nature, hopefully to get further, any further issue in the future, addressing all relevant employees, whether they are paid yearly salary for an hourly rate, there's part-time designation and for certain employees who have mandatory overtime, that amount is also afforded. So just a comprehensive and medial salary.
At this point, at least, obviously we've discussed this at length. One lawyer taking a motion.
I make the motion that we adopt the salary ordinance.
Motion by Carrie and seconded by Scott. Is there any questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. Those votes? Passes six to one. I'm sorry, five to one. You know, do you have a particular copy that we can sign tonight?
I have. One, yes.
What all the budgets and what monies are where for the county? Still haven't got. Is there, do I get that from Yvette?
You wanted like.
What all the fun, what all the funds are, what all the codes are for the funds, what money?
She gets the, are you, you're on the list of budgetary status that Tina sends out every month? After she's paid everybody's bills for the month.
And that's every single fund, that's every, I guess I just want, kind of like what Jamie asked for at one point, was this spreadsheet that just shows, but here's all the.
Does that BSR include the investment?
It doesn't.
No, it just like.
Our total assets would be the BSR plus the investment.
Yes, I just want to see what all we have.
That would do, that would be able to give you the investment side of it.
With that, that's would be the total. All cash balances.
She said that.
I'm just clarifying if there's no.
Right.
There's not a third.
No. I mean, she and I do a report at the end of the month that shows everything, what the, what it started, what was received and what was dispersed and any balance. That might be a little bit more.
I'm kind of with Kim, like something with like cash on hand, because I've never seen that.
Yeah.
I have seen the stuff that Tina's sent out.
Yeah, so I printed what Tina sent out, everything else, but in a lot of the meetings, we're talking about certain funds or certain codes or whatnot. Kind of like what Jamie was saying, it, I don't care if it came from a grant, I don't care if it came from, what does it actually cost us to offer? You know what I mean? Because worst case scenario, we don't have X, Y, Z grants or whatever else. I want to know what money we have that we're playing with and all, because it's the same, we'll pull it out of here, we'll pull it out of here. Maybe I'm looking at it wrong, but I like seeing a budget that has.
Having appropriation and then having cash on hand is two different things. I know that at the school and like, you don't, even if you have appropriation, if you don't have the cash on hand, you still can't spend the money.
Right. I don't know, maybe I mastered it for the wrong.
No, I mean, what she's showing, like Patty said, that would just be the appropriations that were done with budgets, what Tina sent out, the BSR.
Yeah.
So you're going to need something else from Yvette that shows the investment side. And I can ask her in the morning too.
Okay, or I'll get with, I'll get with her.
Can you see if she'll share it with all?
Yes, please do, thank you.
The investment report doesn't show like checking account.
Yeah, that's kind of what I'm talking about, like your bank balance. Is there money in the bank when you write that check?
Yeah.
Not much there is, so we can kind of, since we are the, doing the budgeting, the fiduciary side of it, I would like to see the whole picture. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, because that's like what Jamie was asking, and I think it was at maybe one of the very first meetings of the year, the very last meeting of the year was, yes, that these tires, say from the Sheriff's Department, were paid for from this other fund that they were funded from somewhere else. Still, worst case scenario, if the county had to fund it, so the county had to operate, what does it cost?
So going along with that salary ordinance, something we just approved, the raises that were in there, you recall, the January twenty-seventh meeting, we advertised forty-six thousand to cover those raises and since we brought that down, we don't need that amount, but with the ten courthouse deputies and of course the extension agent with all the employees that got, received the raise and the judge and prosecutor supplementals, I came up with thirty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars for the general fund and fourteen hundred and three dollars on a reassessment for that position. So I feel like we should approve the appropriation of that money. It's not as much as we advertised, which is, which is a good thing, but I think that needs to be. I think that needs to be approved. So all here taking a motion for that amount. I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion for appropriate thirty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty for the general fund at one thousand, four hundred and three for reassessment.
Initially.
We advertised, they were forty-six. I made a motion, Scott, seconded. Are there any questions about that? This is covering the raises that were in this ordinance. All those in favor, raise your hand. Votes. Passes. Next on the agenda is the Highway Department wage increase. They all sent around an email on Tuesday about the commissioners voted in a sixty cent increase for the Highway Department positions, which is eighteen positions, does that sound right? Eighteen, I think.
Thought I got sixteen, because you're not counting the secretary. Dusty and I came up.
I think there's eighteen, sixteen on the ship.
And then as far as the overtime, we'd already approved more overtime. It says yearly twenty-five thousand.
So there's.
It's already gone, you know?
So we need to tackle that as well, as I was going to do and kind of. That's a, that's a question.
You don't get comp. That's commissioner issue.
Okay, so I think the first thing we need to do is we would need to vote on the sixty cent increase for all the Highway Department buildings.
That's going to be fourteen, six eighty-eight, descend the thirteen that I gave you. If there's two more, so I only calculated eight, sixteen from what Phil Dusty and I came up with.
Fourteen, six eighty-eight, if you hear from the May third date, well, the remainder of this year.
Set a team pays, yeah.
And then motion might be increased by sixty cents per hour.
Motion by Carrie, you have a second? I'll second. A motion by Carrie and second by me to increase the Highway Department hourly rate by sixty cents an hour. Any questions?
They're not on the original, they're not on the original salary ordinance.
They're, they're on that salary ordinance that you just signed, but this really, this was not on there. This is by, this is an amendment.
As far as questions, you know, we already opened up the budget this year. You've gone ahead, councils agreed that we're going to pay courthouse employees, the, the issue that was just motioned and passed, but on this one, again, commissioners made in twenty twenty-four, made their recommendations for increases. Don't get me wrong, I'm voting for increases, but the public doesn't, needs to understand, why are you giving these, why are you asking after you've already blessed your increases in twenty twenty-four, why are you guys coming back and asking for sixty cents more now?
Jamie Peters brought it up. He was, he initiated the conversation.
You vote, you guys all three voted for unanimously, so what, what's the need for this sixty cents before, why don't we just add it when the budget opens up again for twenty twenty-five to into twenty twenty-six?
I support the decision.
What, what's the reason for doing this?
We should spell. Felt like with them working on weekends, on call all the time. That's it. Come to the next question, question meeting.
But we are, that.
Okay, what? It was voted in, so let's move on.
They voted it in. I'm, I'm asking for the public. We're asking for an additional sixty cents. Again, I'm not against it because if I'm you.
Come to the next question.
If I'm you, I, no, it's not, this is, this is.
We need to engage here, we're not engaged.
I understand, but I'm asking for, okay, can anybody here at this table, all council, council, can you explain why we're asking for an additional sixty cents for the public?
At the last.
Asking for the council to explain the sixty cent increase.
The commissioners voted it in and requested it comes to us as a matter of procedure. That's why we're doing it. That's what you're asking.
Increase.
When they did it in December, for the twenty twenty.
One percent maybe, I'm guessing. You're talking about when the budget was approved.
Right, twenty twenty-four.
I want to say round four, maybe five.
Is it more than that? It was like seven?
Maybe you want to. I didn't read that, but so.
So to the council, we're saying that a seven percent wasn't good enough. We need to add another sixty cents. For what reason? Again, I'm going to vote for it because I don't think it's fair that we open up the budget to give to courthouse employees. I, I think there's going to be more of this. But what was the reason for the public? Because the public's asking, why are we doing this? And your, your point's right. We should know why we're doing it, not just because the commissioners said they want sixty cents.
We're, we're doing it to retain good employees. That's.
You don't think we were retaining good employees when we gave them seven percent increase?
I think when you guys opened it up last year, we had a major jump ship of good employees.
What employees?
Well, I'm not going to name names because it's inappropriate, but we can discuss it afterwards, of the people that left because of the way that.
Never heard that from, I mean, I've never heard that, but I don't think that. Never heard that from, I mean, I've never heard that, but I don't think that, that qualifies, again, what, what didn't happen here, guys, my point is, we're not explaining whether it's commissioners, and you're right, Lance, they voted for it, but they didn't give it a reason. What was the reason, and we don't know it either, but we're just gonna, we're gonna say sixty cents. That's the end of my conversation.
We were showing the twenty twenty-five.
We gave the reasons in the beginning.
I understand, but now I've already been cut off from asking or talking to you, Lance. Because this is the first time it's come to us, this is the first.
Okay, is there any, are there any other questions on the, on the motion on the floor? I got a motion for Kerry, I made a second, on the, on the wage increase, are any of the questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. Jefferson, I may ask you to maybe go through the other ordinance that you created for this specific situation with the highway.
So, um, and just to clear, this is to sum things up, just with respect to the compensation classes of employees, so, um, I'm looking at Indiana Code thirty-six dash two dash five dash three, which states that the county fiscal body shall fix compensation of officers, deputies, other employees whose compensation is payable from the county general fund, county highway fund, county health fund, county park and recreation fund, aviation fund, or any other fund from which the county has issued warrants for compensation, which includes powers, one, fix the number of officers, deputies, and other employees, two, describe and classify conditions and services, three, adopt schedules of compensation, and four, hire or contract persons to assist with the development schedules for compensation. So just with, with that statute, uh, based on the vote for the commissioners to have a sixty cent raise for the highway employees, we essentially took, um, the separate ordinance based on the amended ordinance, because that was meant to be remedial retroactive to January, and since the vote happened in the April meeting with commissioners, we, uh, prepared additional ordinance, just pulling out those specific employees in the highway department, and then allotting that sixty percent raise in the regular hour. So there's some blanks in the top portion of that would be filled in, so it's passing. Just simply reflects that sixty cent change as it relates to the highway.
That's effective May third.
Effective May third.
So we need to vote on this, um, we're, we're just calling this, I guess, the highway department ordinance, that, or?
Yeah.
But we're looking at an appropriation, right?
We're gonna.
That says appropriation for highway department.
Well, I was gonna vote for the, I was gonna vote for this specific ordinance, appropriation that would go with it if this appears.
I thought we did.
Do we need to approve that ordinance?
What's that?
We just did that, man.
Yeah, I thought we just did that.
We just did that.
It was a six to one, six to zero.
Okay, so now you're, now you're asking where.
The raises, uh, I just, I didn't know if we need to approve this ordinance.
So, I think everyone voted to approve it.
We did.
Yeah, okay, so now we're just to the appropriation, which, which would be from May third, the remainder of the year would be fourteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars, payable to everyone.
Where are we getting these funds from?
Well, I mean, there's a the cleanest way to do it would be cleanest way we can do it would be to, our portion of casino revenue. We'll just cover for the remainder of this year.
But our portion of the casino revenue comes out of the rainy day fund. We don't have a fund that says casino revenue fund.
Yes, you do.
We have casino revenue fund, what, what fund?
Balance, it's, it's still in the eleven ninety-one, you still have the money in there. Eleven ninety-one, I don't know what, off the top of my head, what your account number is, but you still have money in there. Your last sheet. I don't have my casino sheet with me, but I thought you guys had around a million still. Cause you haven't spent anything this year.
Budget from last year again?
The highway departments, their own their own fund, the other increase. They're in the general.
Yeah, they're.
Highway department separate, their, their revenue comes from state.
Okay, so the email you sent out, Gail, last week says.
County council still has one point four.
Very great, the, your, the suggestion from the commissioners was that we pulled this from rainy day fund, so they're not asking us to pull it from rainy day fund anymore?
That was the last I heard, they asked, that was the comment in their meeting, that's why I said that in the email. But I mean, it's up to you guys.
It is, they're relying on it.
The rainy day that is in this casino report that you guys get.
Yeah.
It's, it's all lumped together under the same fund, and then you break it down into different accounts.
Okay.
Under that, now there is a rainy day fund that we've just come to find out today, that ordinance, like, cannot find a signed one, so we had discussed, maybe this needs to be reevaluated, reestablished, I think you said.
For the, 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 the specific rainy day fund, that it's listed in the code of ordinances, um, what I can do or prepare just a simple horse sense to be established.
Yes.
So, just to make sure I'm, I'm understanding this from my stupidity, we, you're saying we have a separate outside of, not inclusive to, so you'd have a rainy day fund, and it would have all these funds underneath that, that support it. You're saying we have a separate rainy day fund.
Here's your rainy day fund over here. That's, it's been taken out of the casino revenue, whatever.
Like, they gave us ten percent.
They went, went over here.
Right.
And it hasn't been, this ordinance was established back in two thousand and ten, money was put in there, and no money has been put in or taken out since then.
Just said that.
Hundred forty-six thousand and some change, but in your casino revenue fund, the eleven ninety-one, that, underneath that, that's where you have all these different buckets, you have the county council, you have the commissioners, you have the rainy day slash savings emergency fund. And under that, that's where you're not, here, you've got the specifics, you've got the codes that have to go with this fund, and once you put that money in there, it can only be spent specifically for that reason. The casino revenue, that's gonna be up to county council, the commissioners, what have you, how they see that, the sheriff's office, like Kim said, if they have something, they need new tires, they could take it out of their casino money.
And that's why I asked, where is this coming, so what, what we're saying.
That was been, this, that was been renamed a few years, depending on the auditor, what they wanted to call it. It was rainy day, it was savings, it was urgency.
Well, as long as it's not coming out of the rainy day fund.
It's not coming out of this.
Our suggestion is that it doesn't come in, we're gonna look at the casino revenue.
Right.
Yeah, I think that one, it sounds like it needs to be, you know, established and to work down to it, so.
I think the casino revenue would be the best place, too.
So, I'll entertain a motion. Let's.
For the, the highway?
No, the high, I mean, the highways. No, they're, they're paid from the highway fund right now, eleven seventy-six.
They'll have to put it in their budget, and to, to collect this.
At the end of the year, when you divide it.
When they do twenty-six, this budget, they'll.
It's twenty-six.
This is like a one time now.
Right.
Think it's a good idea for?
No.
We worked really hard to get salaries out of the casino. Fourteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight, definitely, okay, I'll entertain a motion for this appropriation.
I'll second.
I need to make it, you got to make it?
I'll make the last.
Okay.
I'll second.
A motion by Cam, second by Kerry to appropriate fourteen thousand, six hundred and eighty-eight dollars from the council's portion of casino money to the highway department, any questions? Those in favor, raise your hand. Mims? The, one thing I didn't have on here was the overtime request.
The highway's asking for.
Actually, it wasn't your email, it wasn't.
I believe so, they're asking for an additional ten thousand dollars for the overtime.
So, when Dusty, when Dusty was in last meeting, I asked him, now, state of the council, I asked him if he can project this, because this is the third time, so we need to ask for a, we're only in April. How many more times, give us your best guess.
What you're gonna need.
Exactly, so we're not, this is our third time doing this, you ought to be able to tell us and give us a better number than the thirty thousand we're already appropriating, plus the budget, what was budget. With nine months left, you should be able to say, storms are coming, da, 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 this is what we think, so we're not doing this. I don't, the last thing I wanna have happen is, we don't have any overtime for the guys that are working overtime.
I mean, I think I'll say in his defense, I don't think this has ever been done before.
I, no, it hasn't.
You've never, we've never, so there's no.
They've been paying overtime for the last two years.
No budgets to go back.
So give us, again, give us your best guess, you, you're seeing it right now, you got a trend, ten thousand every month. I hate to say it, I hope it's not ninety grand that they ask us coming for, but maybe it should be forty-five for jet, for, for the remainder of this year, maybe we should ask for forty-five.
Well, in there for the rest of the year.
Just to let you guys know, last year, because their overtime came, came out of casino revenue, because it was thrown in after the budgets were already done in twenty-four, so in twenty-four, they spent twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars and seventy-six cents.
Already had a tougher winter, we already had storms.
The entire year, so, and that was, they had nothing in their budget.
Yeah, we had snow, all those cents. What?
Or can we recommend that it goes to forty-five thousand? Instead of the ten thousand that they asked for?
We, like tonight, we can, we can appropriate whatever we think, I mean, if we think ten thousand isn't enough for right now, we can appropriate more, but it's up to them to put in their budget for next year, what they think they.
Absolutely, I'm, I'm looking.
We can, we can.
Every month we ask, so I, I guess, all right, I'll make a motion that we increase the ask for overtime to forty-five thousand, forty-five thousand dollars for the remainder of the year.
You're giving them additional forty-five, not an additional.
Well, they're asking for, they're already at zero, so they don't really have any.
They do not have any.
Right, so I'm looking at is, you've asked three times, needing that money, so instead of doing ten thousand again, which it looks like that's gonna run out, let's just give them the forty-five so that they have it, and they return it back, if they don't use it, it's gonna get returned to us.
Yeah, cause the amended was twenty-five thousand, and that was gone, and like, yeah, that's what they.
Waked out.
They budgeted, they asked for fifteen, which the fifteen did come out of their actual money.
Yeah, the, November, December's winter, you've got thunderstorms or floods, whatever there is, I think that's the right, instead of doing this and being caught in an emergency situation where we don't have funds, and then you have to go back to payroll, and we have to go back and pay that, and that causes problems all by itself.
Okay, so, sorry, Andy, so you're, you reset your motion, you're, making a motion to appropriate.
Forty-five thousand.
Forty-five thousand dollars from our, uh, the county council's casino money to the highway.
Right, for overtime, specifically. Specifically, thank you.
We're on the overtime, though, because are we talking about just regular overtime, or are we talking what related to overtime?
Let me, let me ask for a se, I need to ask for a second person, we need to ask for a second person, before we do discussion. So Matt's made a motion for forty-five thousand, so I have to second.
I'll second.
Okay. Sorry, Kerry, questions, discussion?
All right, so, my, I understand, and then there's no way that he can, can, um, predict, you know, what, that we've had, the winter that we've had, and the flooding that we've had, and we don't know when the next rainy day, or the flood, or whatever's coming up. We don't know when the next natural disaster is, or man-made disaster that the county could have to do, have to deal with. My problem is, is I don't know if, how do we make this an appropriation, put forty-five thousand dollars there, and we don't need it, then we have to bring it and put it back in. I still feel like that it should be a case by case scenario for the, for the overtime. I don't wanna, I don't wanna write, I don't necessarily wanna write a blank check, forty-five thousand dollars overtime, and then somebody say, oh, well, we need to do this, this, and this, oh, we can just take it out of the overtime budget, and it's something that could.
They can't take it out.
That's, that's something that's created into that line, they cannot take it out of there.
I would like to just give them what they're asking for. And they keep asking for more. We'll notice that, we'll see that, you know, next month, and then that ten thousand, and maybe we'll be like, hey, we should do something different and ban overtime.
Take that, but wish twenty-five, and then we're forty, we're over forty right now, we're over forty.
The payroll, just pay Friday.
And I think, I mean, I think you're, you're asking a great question, but if you watch the commissioners' meetings or attend them, Dusty does a great job, every meeting, of every two weeks, of explaining exactly what overtime is being used.
And what they're doing.
And the commissioners are well aware of it from those meetings, and I think prior to the meetings, you know what overtime is being spent. I think he does a great job of that, and I think all we're doing is putting a cog in the wheel to say, oh, you gotta come back to us for ten thousand, when we've done this every month, leading up to this month, just.
Cause he's basically, salaries necessarily can't be paid with overtime if there's no budget in the fund, correct? So it's putting a cog in it every time.
I mean, they usually don't have overtime unless it is something related, you know, that's, they don't.
You know, I, I mean, it's difficult to put a number on it, I mean, obviously, storms are coming, just getting started, and it's hard to say what we're gonna see.
This year, it's almost like a rainy day, rainy day fund.
Yeah.
The overtime, you know, we, we went to that, to the comp time, maybe that makes sense, but hoping to listen, whatever, I agree, but seems like we went back to comp time, it saves a lot of money, and I understand, I understand that's not our decision to make, but my, my point is saying, like, hey, let's not give more than they're asking for, so that it stays a topic in front of.
Agreed.
I, I think your point is, is that, it is valid, but our issue with comp time, if you were following it, we're doing comp time, is nobody tracked it.
Yeah.
No, we ended up paying big checks out, I'm not in favor of that.
Yeah, I'm gonna, and technically, if you wanna do comp time, it needs to be paid at a time and a half rate, if you're gonna buy, buy, but the wage an hour long, so for every hour of overtime, they should get an hour and a half off.
Yeah, and they do.
And it is, it is awful to track, and technically, if you have comp time, you should use it in the same week, so if you work ten hours Monday, you should take off two hours early on Friday, instead of saving it for July.
Yep.
And that's, it's a payroll.
Then you gotta remember that if it carries over.
Yeah.
If somebody leaves, they get the comp time off of their, when they leave, their comp time is based off of their new, of the salary that they're at, not when you got the comp time, so we lose automatically there, that's, that's a law.
And I don't know how your payroll system works, if they can keep track of it, but most of it's just manually, manually tracked, like on a spreadsheet, so if somebody just types in something wrong, it's.
I'm good, I'm good either way, we approve it every time they need it, or we give them an allotment because they're already over forty for the year, so.
When you, when you do this, you don't have to do a forty-five at one time, you can take it as you need it out of our casino.
Because we approved it.
Cause we've approved, we got, you got permission to take up to forty-five, but if they only need twenty, the other twenty-five stays with us.
So you're gonna get it turned in there right now.
Okay, that makes more sense.
It doesn't, it doesn't have to go all at once.
Sure.
Right?
Then that, I, I think that's the best way to do it, put the ten in now, and we'll just make a coverage.
But she'll, she'll just pay it as the overtime.
We, we're acknowledging, we're, we're dedicating forty-five thousand from that fund, so she's gotta say to us, hey, you're down this much, that makes sense.
Yeah. We created that, we don't go over forty-five.
Yeah, maybe this will lessen the need for the overtime, you still have to.
Still have the other.
Yeah, I'm not, I, I, I want to make, I, I am not saying these guys aren't doing their overtime, or it's not being tracked right, the mother nature and whatever other events that caused all this, um, it just caused, I think, I think Dusty does a great job of explaining what he's spending overtime.
I think the highway department is a whole, it's done a great job, it's been a tough year for them already. I think the highway department is a whole great job. Been a tough year for them already.
Yeah, trees off roads and.
So, okay, so I have a motion from Matt, a second from Kim for forty-five, appropriate forty-five thousand dollars from the county council's casino funds for the highway. Any questions? All those in favor? Carrie? Ladies? All right.
The last one, I put it on the back of your old packet, it wasn't on your list, I'm sorry.
Cause I got an email with it.
Yeah, I sent them out an email. This is just, they're asking for, this has been advertised, it's been, where's my?
It's the highway one you sent this afternoon?
Yeah, where they have to increase two of them, increase two and increase the other.
Yeah, it's just their money that they're moving around.
Inside of your own fund, right?
Yes.
If we, we can push this to the next meeting if I want time to.
I mean, that's. It's advertised and everything and it's.
It's not asking for more. It's just asking.
They're just taking it from fifty-five hundred from their revenue line and allotting a thousand to office supplies and forty-five hundred to other supplies. I just want to say you should have one, Lance.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll make a second. They can shift it out.
Yeah.
Okay, I got a motion from Matt, a second.
I apologize for that.
Kim to. Appropriate. Increase the line items for in the highway fund. Eleven seventy-six for forty-five hundred dollars for other supplies, one thousand dollars for office supplies and decrease fifty-five hundred. For refunds and reimbursements, so. So. Initials or anything needed. Okay, is there any questions? All those in favor? Ladies? You're going to sign what they're going to do, Gail?
Yeah.
More reports?
I can start with Amy.
Yeah.
Um, so the meeting was March twenty-sixth. Tom talked about some trainings he was putting on. He talked about the radios that he just discussed with us. And he also discussed a storm shelter and land development patriot, and then he's looking to upgrade some tornado sirens. Be willing to do it, just let me know.
Recycling meters not till midnight.
I've had fireworks.
Nothing to report.
And school enrollment meeting got moved to Tuesday, so nothing to read. So one other thing I'll bring up is the. The. Grant application process that was set around the commissioners approved. So I thought we were going to do something with that, but it sounds like it's up and running. So you guys have that information?
And that's basically where. People go to the commissioners to ask for a grant to utilize casino revenue, right?
Then the other thing, I'm not speak out of turn here, but I have been working on moving the videos from Facebook Live over to a YouTube channel. And I've been doing that for commissioners and council. I'm in the middle of it. I meant, I downloaded all the way back to summer of twenty-three. Um, it's not fun, but I'm going to work on it. May tenth is, they go away May tenth, so my deadline is to get that done before May tenth.
Thank you.
You got the report on the gaming grant.
Are we going to discuss, two things? I like I like your format that you have out here on the agenda, but you dropped old business and we did have old business. Of old business. Garrett was going to reach out, maybe Jefferson.
Yeah, so I I can address this. I know one of the things that Garrett told me about ahead of the meeting was, I believe it was the last meeting, then we ended, SBLA brought up. Um, the right office hours and like officials, he's reached out to the state land examiner, so looking to that process. So he's not in the state right now. Um, based on last meeting, he did reach out.
Okay, and then, um, just as. It's not old business land, so I don't know if you want to ask for other topics. So. I hope everybody's watching. I watched numerous hearings at the state level, and SB one was, is now signed into law. And they're already making suggestions to counties. To understand what's getting ready to happen. So. These tax reductions that are going to happen are going to affect our revenue. Then it comes to the lit. I don't know if you guys paid attention to one lit. All lids reset. Everyone goes back to zero. So the Senate bill is basically, and then Jefferson, don't take this personally. I wish Garrett was here as our political position. Him and I were having a long discussion about this yesterday, and they're trying to jam through a lot tomorrow. There's a lot going on. But this transparency bill puts everything on council now. At everything. So when, in the past, in our budget. Casino revenue has covered the medical building, Bennington, and the tech center. We're not going to be able to go, you you guys are going to cover it. We have to explain to the public why we would borrow from the casino revenue. We have to explain. It all has to be in our general fund before we can move it up. And if public hearings have to be held, if we're not, if we don't have enough tax revenue to cover all these things, why we have to go to that. So that transparency is going to get very big. And the reset of all lit taxes, the only good news there is that. You could, you have the ability to raise your lit tax all the way up to two point three seven percent. The bad news is they're not recommending you do that. And so I I don't want to, I don't want to, I'm just saying, you guys, I hope everybody's watching what this Senate bill means, because it is. I think it's going to be good for tax, for the property owners. But as far as revenue, I think we've got to really pay attention. And then with the casino report. We, I know John's not here.
Yeah, he's here.
Oh, do you want to? I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of John coming up and explaining this so it's out to the public. We're. Cause we haven't had a casino revenue update since the beginning of the year.
Cause I'm looking at we're trying to twenty-eight thousand projected last year.
Uh, that's, the way things have been going last few years, that's not a bad year. Uh, it's it's been a pretty steady decline. I think the the. The the bigger concern, I I had kind of put that in the email. I don't know if everybody's seen it or not, but the 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 number to watch is seventy-five million on the casinos revenue, because if they fall under that. They they have a new tax structure that they fall under and it'll it'll cost you a million dollars over the next twelve months.
And right now they're at seventy-seven four.
Yeah, yeah. And they were, I mean, they were at eighty-two in the in the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year. So that's, I mean, that's a. It it it's not likely, but it's possible. I mean, they need three average months and they were closed and you couldn't get to them for some of April, so.
So April, so yeah, that might be. That's going to be my question.
That's that's not in the in the numbers here. It'll it'll be lower than than it would have been. They had, they had a good April last year, so it's by percentage, it's going to be down. If they can average six million a month. Then then you're going to be all right.
For the remain until.
Until, till, yeah, until July one.
So they need six million April or. Yeah, May, May, June, you know, they need.
They, uh, April, May, June, yeah. And and one of those is going to reflect, you know, them being closed and the roads being closed and all that. So that's. That's a little dicey. The other ones out of.
Do we get any reprieve with the state being that, you know. We had road closures, I mean, is there any appeal that we could make to them? Say they did come under, because. Two weeks of a casino being closed down, I got to believe we're going to be under six million dollars.
The the budget bill's not out yet. I guess that's probably where our appeal is. I mean, it's it's all in statute, so it'll, I mean, it'll happen automatically if it if if it happens, but they, um. It 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 happened a few years ago, and if if they make that money back in the following year, you get the money back. They they have to make a lump payment. At whatever point they cross that seventy-five million mark in the year that they're benefiting from that. Uh, Rising Sun got into this and could never get out. I mean, this was basically written for the smaller casinos several years ago, and they they get a lot less wagering tax money because of it. And it it hit us during COVID, but we got it back in the middle of the second year. Uh, when it, when it came back through, but that'll, that will be the real question is, you know, if they. If they keep going down a little bit every year, then that that that's seventy-five million number is going to be. It's, you know, it's it's going to be something we're going to be sweating over every year.
It was asked in one of those meetings, the payments that we have to make to those other surrounding counties, why those couldn't be tied into percentage of revenue as well? I mean, because it it's a set amount.
Yeah. Oh, it's a, it's a, it's a set percentage, but it ought to be, if if it should be a percentage of the total, it's ten, it's ten percent between all of them.
But to to Kim's point, we, I remember us having this conversation, and it looks like part of the agreement, we do have the ability to ask the state. To reduce the bordering counties amount.
The gaming commission has jurisdiction, they were written in as parties to those agreements, twenty-eleven or so, so they do have. I mean, basically, everybody's acknowledged their jurisdiction if they wanted to, you know, come in and. They they've been hesitant to do it in the past, but they might, uh, you know, under extreme circumstances with everything else that's hit local governments this year, it's it's worth an ask.
They weren't hesitant to share it with the entire state when it was supposed to be the counties that voted them in.
No, they weren't hesitant.
I just hope we don't find out they've shared a lot more of it when the budget bill drops.
Right.
Or it's more likely they're going to share it with themselves, not with the rest of the state.
Okay, so that's, that's the, what Kim just brought up. That's the rabbiting piece of this.
Right.
Now the casino fund money that we get. That's the target. We're already down four months.
It's, it's, it's down a lot, and it's down by more. And and that's, um, I had put a little bit of a note in there. There were some. Errors that the state made in in collecting and reporting that last year that made this bounce around all over the place. I think all of that has washed out, but depending on what month we're measuring, it could skew a quarter or or a six month. You know, if you're on, if you're on one of those ones where you got nothing or one of those ones where they made it up the following month, it's going to, it's going to play with those numbers. But they are down more, and part of that is because you've got a graduated tax. So. You're getting less money and you're moving through the brackets. Belterra is moving through the brackets more slowly, so they they're paying. Like, uh, they've just crossed into the twenty-five percent wagering tax rate. They they were in that quite a bit earlier last year, so we had. And it goes from, uh, starts at, it's ten, then it's twenty, and then it's twenty-five. And then, you know, for the bigger casinos, it goes on up from there. Yeah, this is the first year since COVID that it's been close enough that we needed to to watch it this this early in the year, but that's, and that's the big thing that I would keep my eye on for the. At least till the end of June.
Yes, that's impressive.
Yeah.
There's no way to project this, is there?
None, probably not over a really long term. What we're doing. Gets pretty close, but we're cheating a little. We adjust that. I mean, we we start with a big number and then tighten it up as the year goes on. So it's, you know, the idea is we don't want to get caught off guard with something that comes in lower.
And the online gaming.
We we don't get any of that. Now, there has been some talk that maybe that's how the state's going to fill their budget hole is to tax that a little harder.
Yeah.
Which. Probably won't make a lot of difference in our revenue, other than, you know, unless, I don't I don't think they're going to tax it enough that the casinos are going to push, you know, slot machines over over sports wagering.
Right.
Or that they even can. It's 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 not always the same kind of customer. Thank you.
I just want to make sure we have our installers, two meetings, you got those for them?
Yeah, I got both of those. You have the.
One ordinance, the other, the highway ordinance, do they get passed around?
Yeah.
You passed it.
I think I did.
I just want to make sure by signing.
It came back this way.
I have a motion adjourned.
I make a motion to advance.
Motion Scott second, I'm third. Next meeting is May.
Second, Thursday, fourteen.
Gail, did you ever check any state yield on that, um, the reimbursement on the, uh?